Good evening, everybody. It is November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. At six thirty, I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Rockford Area School Board Meeting, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Jimmy Hilstrum.
Here.
Beth Prescott.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Amy Edwards.
Here.
Jenny Nealon.
Here.
Jessica Johnson, all are present.
Excellent. Many visitors, as well as Dr. Rital Hoop at the table. And next item is approval of agenda for number two. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, as first and second, any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post. Tonight's agenda is approved. Item number three is the opportunity for public comment. Looking over, there are no public comments, so we will close the opportunity for public comment at this time. Item number four is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is presented to you, and I would appreciate a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott, and a second?
Sammy Edwards, second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, there's first and second, any discussion? See none, all those signify by aye?
Aye.
Post. Consent agenda carries. Moving on to five, safe and welcoming environment, celebration of fall activities, I would like to call Mr. Dan Pratt.
All right. You guys ready? Hold on, hold on, another one of them. All right, with me tonight are members of sports teams, activities, they've been asked by their coaches, advisors to come, and what they'll do, they're going to introduce themselves, tell who they represent, and then a few words about their season, or their past season, whatever, I know if you have too many in the same event, it might be kind of redundant, so I told them to try to figure something else out. We also have a video, the volleyball team has their banquet tonight, so the four captains have made a video, so we'll have that maybe at the conclusion. So, just real quick, before we get started, we had over four hundred participants, and there's a couple double participants, but just run through real quick the numbers in soccer, twenty-seven high school kids, six middle school, football, seventy-two high school, thirty-nine middle school, cross-country, twenty-one high school, nine middle school, girls tennis, fourteen high school, eight middle school, volleyball, twenty-five high school, thirty-six middle school, I might have that backwards. Musical, thirty-four and thirty-four, with eighteen in the pit. That was a great musical this past weekend, had good attendance. Robotics, seventeen middle school, nine high school, and that might grow a little bit. Cheerleading, nine and four, and the boys soccer had five high schools and twelve middle school. So as you can see, our numbers are up, a lot of participation, and as winter starts, some of the things like cheerleading and robotics and speech and some of those other things are going to be picking up the numbers. So with that, I will, we'll start over here, introduce yourself, tell us who you're representing, and little blurb.
My name is Wilson Sanderson, I'm representing football team. One of our big goals this year was to repeat, so win conference for the third time in a row, and we accomplished that, so that was big. Our motto this year was "Rise as one," which kind of means, you know, everybody rising together, play for the one common goal, and I think we accomplished that.
I'm Lois Edman, I'm representing football as well. I want to talk about our record, we finished with a pretty good record this year of eight and two, and I'd say our most memorable game was when we were playing Albany at home, we won twenty to fourteen in overtime.
I'm Sam Stuckmeyer. We had a great season this year with a great group of guys, probably the best group of guys in a long time, and, you know, we just achieved a lot this year as a group.
I'm Caitlin, I'm representing soccer, and I enjoyed all the new team members and connecting with them.
I'm Riley, I'm representing soccer, I enjoyed watching our program grow this year, and our record was six, eight, and two, which is one of the best that we've had in years.
My name's Ella, I'm representing soccer, and one of the things I really liked this year is that our coach opened up a lot of new opportunities, and we've had it for two years now, and our program has really better than it comes to.
My name's Peyton, I'm representing soccer, and one of my favorite things this year was team bonding, because it really made us a more collective team especially, and it just like made the team a lot more bonded.
My name is Lynn Peterson, I'm representing the musical. This year we put on Bye Bye Birdie, and we had three shows, and they were all very successful.
I am Sarah, I'm representing the musical as well. I'd say the musical was a great experience for both middle school, high school, and pit members, and we all collaborated really well with one another to create a great show. And then I'm Sarah, I'm with girls tennis. This season was really fun for me, it was my senior year, I joined tennis last year, and it's just, it's a sport that, it's lifelong, but it's also something for fun, and it's something you can do to hang out with your friends while still being active and participating in something of the sport.
I'm Nora, I'm representing girls tennis, and this year we did better than we did in past years, like winning more matches, and we have like strong players coming up from middle school, so like our program's growing rapidly.
My name's Owen, I'm representing Rockford Fall Cheer. We had a really good season this year, we went to competition with MCCA, and we had four of our girls try out for Allstate, and one of us actually made it, so.
I'm Veronica Furtig, and I'm representing Rockford FFA, and we just came back from Nationals, where we had many teams do very well, such as MOE, we got top three, and in Best in World Green Hand, we got first place at Nationals, which was great.
Yay!
Yeah!
We also actually do fun things, like go to a rodeo, and go on a tour of an apiary farm, and for this coming year, we already have four teams touring states so far.
My name is Leo, I'm representing the Rockford Middle School Robotics, and this year we have done a lot of, like, we have a few robots and tested them, and went to a few competitions.
I'm Liam, and I'm representing robotics, and our first tournament a couple days ago, we got second place at the 13th week.
My name's Nolan, I'm in our very first test tournament, our bot went down twice, but we managed to fix it, and it was okay.
And then this will be the FRC, First Robotics Competition, ninth through twelve.
Hi, I'm TJ, I'm representing FRC Robotics. Within the past summer, we started work on new technology with a Swerve Bot, which is basically the peak technology of last year. Today, we're preparing for season, and throughout the summer, we've basically been preparing, going into winter, going into January, where competition seasons start, and we'll build for our next, what, the volleyballers?
Yep.
Yeah.
My name's Justin, I'm also from robotics. One of the other things we've been doing a lot, a couple of our members have been going and volunteering to help run the middle school competitions the past few weeks. We go and we help ref and tech the robots to make sure that they all meet the standards, and then we keep score for matches and help set up a tick tock.
I'm Jack Vito, and I'm also representing the first robotics competition. Yeah, another thing we've been doing for the past few months, so we have been going to businesses and learning how they apply robotics to their company, and learning ways to improve our robot.
I'm Brady, I'm representing cross-country. We had sixteen new runners, and we placed our highest section total since two thousand and four. A little bit about the smaller athletes, so thirteen of the fourteen total athletes and greatest ten with COVID have an A or B average, and I'm recognized as all-conference academic by Wright County Conference, and then the boys varsity section team achieved silver status for JPA for an average of three point five five eight, and the girls varsity section team achieved gold status for JPA of average of three point nine six four. And then, a little bit about the athletic results, so we had seven athletes participate in the first junior high state championship, it was at the East Middle School, and then four total athletes were all-conference for the first time since two thousand and eighteen.
Hi, I'm Grace.
Hi, I'm Hannah.
Valley mob.
And I'm Megan, and we're the twenty twenty-three volleyball captains of this season. A few of our team accomplishments this year was that we won the mound tournament at the beginning of the season, and then another one was we took second in our conference.
And then a few individual accomplishments were I got a thousand career assists, and I got a thousand career dues.
A few of our favorite moments in games from this season was beating Annandale in three at Annandale, they have a really loud student section and loud gym, so it was a really fun environment to win in.
Another one of our favorite things from the season was our safety meetings, which is where we meet as a team after games, then we eat food and talk.
It was also super fun to beat Buffalo, we played them in the round tournament, we kind of have a little town rivalry going on, so it was really fun to play.
The bus rides to all the games are also super fun, but a highlight of one of the bus rides was the Howard League, where the bus driver turned the music all the way up and didn't realize, and turned the music all the way up, and we were just riding the whole way there with the music all the way up.
And then this was our senior season, and we had eight seniors in total on the team, and then two senior majors, so it was really fun to play kind of one last time together, and have a super fun season.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming, parents, coaches, and players, and activity participants, and thank you very much for doing what you do, and we appreciate everything you guys do.
Before you leave, I want to say thank you, Mr. Pratt, for organizing this. This will be the new norm, every season we're going to do this, because this is why we exist, to have you guys here. Gord, do you want to say anything at all?
No, it's just awesome.
Don't get her on, Mr. Pratt, so we get our picture, though.
Yes, so we take a picture.
Get her on, Mr. Pratt, come on.
We'll actually take one out there.
Okay.
On the steps.
Yes.
That sounds fun.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Great job. I know, right? But, Mr. Ram said, I think you're up next, so we'll let you talk about the FFA National Recamp, unless you want. Do we have our FFA kids out there still, or are they coming in?
Oh, she's out, she's out there.
Yeah, I still have to wait.
I think what she just shared, what she shared up there, so it's fine.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with FFA?
No? All right, so we'll move on from five B then, unless anyone has any objection? No? Very good.
Awesome, by the way, I just have to say, like, it was so much fun to follow how great they were doing at Nationals, like, it's so impressive, and really, really, really cool. And I saw something today as well on the FFA feed about someone receiving an award.
I saw that, too. Congratulations, Mr. Rizzo. Congrats.
That's awesome.
All right. No, I, we're five B, so FFA Nationals, we're good? Okay, very good. So we'll move on to six A then, Rockford High School Principal Report. Mr. Menard. Does she want?
She did, yeah. She did.
Yeah, very good, then we can go back.
Let's go back to the five B.
Oh, do you want to, do you want to talk?
Want to talk about? If you want to, I just want to make sure you came back in, I just wanted to make sure. Oh, I'm with that. I'll speak if you want me to. We're good. I, we're good, then, okay. I suppose Mr. Furtig's at the desk.
Yeah, very good, so, Mr. Menard then?
Hello, good evening. Again, I'm going to share with you an update from the high school, which mostly captures some of the progress we've been making on our school improvement plan goals, so I'll share with you those five goals, and a little bit of highlight of where we're at as a snapshot today within progress goals, and then a little bit of an ID update as well. So our first goal this year will be to explore and develop two additional career pathways and increase access towards student certification for all. What I mean by that is, I think our reach goal in the next three to five years is that students have the opportunity to gain a certification before they leave high school. And so, right now, we have four pathways where they're able to do that. I want like twenty-six. And they might now be pathways, it might be after this class, you can take this test, and so we'll be continuing to look into that, but we're just going to add two here for the next couple of years, which is actually tied to Minnesota State grant that we received for our International Backglow Program, so more on that a little bit. We're exploring articulated credit, which would be a type of certification that I'm talking about, so credit that matches with career and tech colleges across the state of Minnesota. Our ag department is developing a proposal for the metal shop specifically, getting rid of some of the underused equipment and/or damaged equipment, and make way for some of the technology I was referring to in the work session for Twenty-First Century, three printing, laser engraving, et cetera. In the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we will build a building leadership team and student leadership team to create a welcoming and positive environment, so last year I came to you and I had two different student groups, one was for like climate and culture, and the other one was for like building safety, a combined one, now it's a student leadership team. And I went to the student body on Google Classroom, and I issued a free invitation, let me know if you want to be a leader, test your leadership skills. And that was the second week of school, and I had four very brave souls who wanted to be on the student leadership team. Really, four? So, we shot the survey out again, and now I have forty-one. There were about eighteen that came to our actual meeting on the night, but as I told them, we typically will meet during rocket block or right away in the morning, first period, if you've got tests to study for, papers to write, whatever, we can catch you up, or there'll be regular updates on the Google Classroom, so I never want it to be a priority that stands in the way of something else, but I do want them to feel welcome and also participate. The building leadership team was created this year, you might hear the elementary and middle talk about their building leadership teams, we really didn't have one by name, we have a pedagogical team that focuses more on curriculum and ID matters that need to be addressed, but the meeting sometimes lags into more operational discussions, and so now this building leadership team will focus on operations, climate, culture, which will allow the pedagogical team to specifically look at curriculum and instruction. The student leadership team, building leadership team, again, focused on climate, culture, operations, we are dipping our toes in the water of Jostin's Renaissance, so the same company that we use for yearbook, photography, things of that nature, we are now able to have access to some of the wonderful resources they have for character development, socially-emotional learning, and Renaissance is a full package deal. Years ago, when I was a Renaissance student in high school, they didn't have things like the harbor where you can watch videos about a peer situation that you might be struggling with, and they opened through, they didn't have resources like the monthly playbook, so what often is done at these meetings is you talk about what your ideas, and then you don't have time to do any of this stuff, and so what the playbook specifically does is it says, okay, in November, we're going to challenge you to do one of these three things. And so, in the high school, in November, we have a gratitude wall in front of the media center, and students are able to come to the office, they can write what they're grateful for on a post-it note, and if we approve it, put the post-it note up on the gratitude wall. And then the student leadership team also has a goal during the holiday season, so between Mondays, when we're going to start a week from today, and the time to leave for winter break, that student leadership team is going to write just a card, a letter of gratitude to every non-teaching staff in the district, and we'll pick a morning, and we'll go deliver them to the buildings and the offices, and that's just one other way to show gratitude, particularly to our faculty and staff. Staff and students are asked to further explore Renaissance websites and resources, I gave them those links. Our students support PLC, their entire goal this year is focused on student attendance, and they're trying to reduce the rate of students who are not regularly attending school, state defines not regularly attending as missing ten percent or more school days. And so, we're receiving different reactions from the community about, some are already at that ten percent threshold, and I simply say, ten percent of the school year is seventeen days, that's about a month of school, and we're not, we're not trying to point it out to be negative, we need a plan so that student has a better chance of passing class or being the grade that they would have deserved had they had more regular attendance. We've rolled out our SEL Tier Two skill plans, in light of some legislative changes, we need to demonstrate non-exclusionary discipline, they call it, and so we are using that as an opportunity to integrate pre-made lessons on over thirty-six different social-emotional learning skills. So a student just begins in class, a student is having peer aggression, we sit them down and we decide, this is the skill that we think you need to work on, and then you come up with a two or three-step plan, in five days you can graduate from your skill plan. It's working great. We've issued probably twenty-five skill plans, and we don't have many others anymore. It's not to say things aren't becoming issues, right, but that's a way to handle it, a way to kind of empower the student to say, yeah, I really am not good at that, and so then they come up with a reasonable plan for themselves. So it's working great, and that's a system that we've implemented, five through twelve. In this school year, we'll use a cross-cutting approach for all meetings to focus on Common Language, Student Agency, and Quality Instructional Strategies. So my, my point in developing this school improvement plan in the summertime was, I felt like we had gone from five goals to twenty-seven goals, with all the different affiliations we have, thinking about ID, thinking about, you know, our state requirements, thinking about all the requirements that we have to complete for Abbott. And so, trying to distill that down, what are kind of three things that we're really looking to get out of this year, and that's those three, the Common Language, so if we're doing something across classrooms and calling it something different, it seems different to a kid, and so we've really got to start calling things the same, having a Common Language. Student Agency, so promoting student independence, and I was just mentioning to the skill plans, you don't have the skill, you come up with the plan, and we'll help you. And so, really trying to bridge that gap between what I do in school and what people tell me to do versus being ready for adulthood. And then Quality Instructional Strategies, so I'm really trying to marry some of the things that we're doing in our ID planning with some of the things I'm responsible for as our new Abbott District Director. And so, that was a role that was previously taken by the former Northwest Suburban Director. She had Abbott experience, and she was kind of helping Rockford along with Abbott, as well as the Brooklyn Park School District, and so they decided to give that role back to the districts so that we have more ownership of it, I know more about what's going on in the high school, I know how to more meaningfully implement it, and so what you, what you can know about Abbott is that, in terms of instructional strategies, it boils down to five things, and of course it's an acronym, and it's WICER, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And so, certain staff development days and certain staff meetings that we have every three weeks or so, we're focusing on one of those strategies. So we started with collaboration. What do you think you do in your classroom to collaborate? And there were wonderful discussions. And then we talked about organization at the last one, and so we've talked about these two strategies, people are sharing strategies with each other. Next, in January, we're going to try to implement them into our written ID plans and course outlines, so that if you're, a teacher could show you, this is where we collaborate, this is where we're reading and writing, this is what we call it, so we're building up towards that. In the meantime, I am filling each of those strategies with look force, so I'm going around right now, looking at, where do you collaborate in classroom, did I see it? As well as organizational strategies as well, and so as we go through the next one, the walkthrough survey gets longer, because I'm looking for more things. Teachers and students will be able to name multiple WICER strategies used, and those which were, they worked best given the environment, subject matter, and learning style. I don't think the power of WICER is in WICER, I think it's in the student being able to say, well, this is how I finally got that concept, because we did a ten-two-two, and you taught us, and then we discussed in our notes, and we revised our notes, and that's when I got it, was when I was talking to my friend over here. So, I'm excited for that, that's the power of WICER. We've got collaborative strategies, again, and organization. We, one of our teachers created a graphic that marries the WICER acronym, the ID learner profile traits, and the ID approaches to teaching and learning, and that is a way that you can see for the first time how ID and Abbott fit together. Those posters are now available for pickup, and so we're going to go pick them up, and they'll be displayed around high school. Again, with the WICER walkthroughs, I am going through training, I've been through two rounds of training, the third one's in Minneapolis in March, and it's a five-part series, so by this time next winter, I will be fully trained as the district director, and getting a massive amount of help from our program manager, who checks in on the area and so on. We also are doing work on our site team, which I also appreciate it, because then I'm able to marry the Abbott goals with some of these SIP goals, so that we're all working towards the same thing. And we will increase broadcast and two-way communication quality, notice I said quality, not quantity, so I'm interested, I figured if we have teacher websites, they ought to be updated, and they ought to work, and so that was made possible in October, that's how we spent some of our staff development time. Staff websites, you can click on them, it's the actual teacher, it's their actual schedule and syllabus, my goodness.
That's awesome.
We're sending on more frequent social media postings, so we're interacting with Courtney, who is awesome, and just pushing them out and celebrating all the good things we're doing. We are, there's continuous announcements internally, so I'm using Google Workspace to increase get-it-now communication, because teachers don't necessarily check their email, or it's going to get buried, but it'll always be in the workspace, it's kind of like the old chat meets Google Share, so we use that a lot at high school. We're looking at the effectiveness of the weekly parent bulletin, I'd like to have some data that suggests that maybe that's not an effective way to share our weekly use, and maybe we lean more on the social media, but we're using more intentional focus, testing out the readership of that, not that that's going to change necessarily, but we're studying it more. And we've considered alternative methods of communication, so more of that, we do a monthly something, that's a little bit longer, that type of thing. Okay, a little bit on International Backglow as our magnet program. So another focus that we're going to be doing this year is beginning to call ID our magnet, because I think for a long time it was that grant that the high school has, now it's a part of us, now it is our magnet, and so we're going to start to refer it, refer to it a little bit differently this year. We have a hundred and nine students representing our Northwest Suburban Consortium, that's a hundred and nine students that would not have access to get to Rockford High School if we were not an ID program. That's a huge deal, that's about a grade level. So, we need it, we love it, and we're going to continue to move forward with it. We also receive, again, a transportation report for magnet students and field trips, a lot of college and career support, we do have, through Northwest Suburban, we can take field trips to colleges and universities, there's student support groups for young women and young men, Essence and Step Up, and then also Educators Rising, which the goal of that nationwide club is to increase diversity in the teacher workforce. You see the breakdown of the districts, where our students are coming from, and then we do have a partnership with the actual educator support, so we have a wonderful, extensive multicultural resource center with artifacts, curriculum kits, monthly PB opportunities, we have one of our teachers attending one, it's being led by one of the directors about the power and influence of the N-word, and so she's going to be attending that in a couple of weeks here, and then they assist our magnet coordinators and Abbott district directors, because we need it. And so, that's actually what we'll be doing on our January twenty-second professional development days, we'll be visiting Northwest Suburban, again, to kind of explain the importance of Rockford High School's magnet program. High School's magnet program and what Northwest Suburban does for our kids and therefore for our school. I believe those dots have not been connected explicitly for our staff because we were so busy trying to get ID up off the ground. And so now we need to understand a little bit more about the relationship with Northwest Suburban. More. So again, we do have three ID programs. Our middle years program, all of our 10th grade students are working on their personal projects. That's a passion project that they choose and research and do a report on. And the 10th grade teachers are revising their NYPD unit plans. Our ID grading is reviewed and rolling out pilots for some courses this spring for families. So that's a requirement of ID. We need to be grading them in the ID grading criteria and sharing that out with families. And that's being softly open to this year. Our diploma program, 68 students participated in ID exams. They scored a four or higher, which at most Minskew schools earns college credit. There was cost savings for Rockford students of $103,000. Those were the exam fees that were paid by the grant that families did not have to pay last year. This year, we have eight full diploma program students. 71 students are signed up to take 198 exams and the ID grant will continue to cover that cost. And again, we received, we received a grant from the state. It's an IB STEM grant specific to creating more opportunities for students to take external exams and creating two more career pathways. Those are the primary goals we told the state that we would go get after. We were approved and now for three years we'll receive $25,000 each year to do just that. Speaking of career pathway, we have five CP candidates. We did have a community tour and many of you were there. And we went around to our college career fair and also all of our different magnet schools. We had over 50 vendors at the career fair this year. Students in the career pathway have to develop a language portfolio, different cultures, artists. And so they took a field trip to the Walker. And there's a service learning requirement. They need to fulfill 50 hours over two years. So they have done a couple of field trips already to River Works and feed my starving children and more to come on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Menard?
Those IB exams that are, the costs are being covered right now by the grant? When that grant goes away, then will the students be paying for that?
The costs will likely fall on families, yeah.
And how much do those normally cost?
They're about $109. However, there are some reversible programs. IB has just recently partnered with MDE and so they've removed a lot of the fees that we paid to be a part of NNIB, the Minnesota group of teachers. And so I'm hopeful that those exam fees will also come down or maybe be covered by MDE. More comment there?
Good question. So number one, this is awesome. And it's fun to hear, you know, the high school talking about that this is our magnet. And it was awesome, I'll also say, to be on the community tour. Because even though I've been a resident and my family has gone through this district, to see it all come together in that way on that day from the elementary to middle to high was phenomenal. Like almost, like everybody should have to do that tour. Like it was that good. No, I'm not kidding. Or like we should do something to bottle it because it actually like...
Yes, you are.
Oh, good. Perfect. Of course you are.
We've got some plans coming through on the calendar.
Of course you are. Because it was just like, oh, you know, it was like, it just was really nice to see it all. But my question, you know, you had mentioned field trips to colleges and universities, transportation paid by Northwest Suburban. Do you feel like we've got enough colleges, universities, career recruiters, agencies coming to Rockford to visit with our kiddos and to start, like to be present here versus having to go in sporadic ways?
It's a great question. The military is really good about it.
Right.
Colleges and universities are not as eager to come as they were pre-COVID. I'm noticing some, but not as many as, as pre-COVID numbers. And speaking with a parent who connected me with one of her contractors for her business, we're going to also look for a way to do like career visits. So College of St. Ben's might come and talk about St. Ben's, well, let's get an art welder in to talk about art welding.
Exactly.
So that's going to open up a whole new avenue too for visitors.
So do we have a strategy? So we talked about the visitors for like the career, but you acknowledge that colleges aren't necessarily coming in as much as maybe they had pre-COVID. Do we have a strategy then for, for filling that gap for students that, you know, normal, like that kind of has been a normal part of high school experience is to have kind of those people milling through the school and starting to have exposure that way as to what might be next? What is our strategy to help students see that then if they're not coming in?
Yeah, I would say we lean on technology a lot, right? So our college and career center led by our counselors are meeting with students a lot about their specific future plans. I think with some of our MCIS career inventory surveys and things help with that. And then it's more of an individual conversation about if this is what you want to do, here's the options about where to go.
Okay.
Because even when they come, that doesn't necessarily mean kids visit.
Right.
And some of them sit in that guidance office empty. And so I think even though it's more laborious to do it individualized, I think it's a better opportunity, more effective opportunity here for each individual student. And we're small enough where we can afford to do that.
Yep.
So let's do it.
Good. Thank you. Love it.
Any other questions?
Not, not a question, but I really appreciate how you've consolidated and aligned all the goals at your site. There's so many balls in there all the time. And so to say, these are the most important things that we're going to focus on, I think it really speaks to the leadership you provide in your staff is saying, let's get really good at a few things, and next you're getting good at a few other things and then we start building that toolbox. So fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it, Mr. Menard. Mr. Menard, are you providing jazz band approval overnight trip or is that going to be Mr. Furtick behind you?
I relinquish that honor too.
Excellent. So we will then, you can relinquish the podium then and the clicker. And item 6B, appreciate it, Mr. Menard. Item 6B, overnight trip approval for jazz band. It is superintendent's office and I would guess Mr. Furtick will be a part of that.
He's going to pass it on. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the trip, we've done this trip actually for a number of years, but what we do is Bemidji has a, has a jazz festival up there where they have hype, where they have guest clinicians come in and they actually do two things. They provide education to all the jazz bands that go there. So upon approval, we would be taking our Jazz One group, our top group up to Bemidji State. You get clinic on select pieces that you're working on. For us, it would be for stuff that we're preparing for contests. So the timing of this one is very, very good because we would be going up on February the 10th and we are hosting contests on Rockford on the 12th. So we'd be getting some really good instruction right before we play kind of like play and put win and count, so we're actually getting scored. But we're there and we get, we get great information and feedback. It's a non-competitive group, we get a lot from the clinicians. And then we'd stay there that evening and then they also give a final concert. The clinicians are also performers. So they'll have a guy maybe on saxophone, maybe a girl on trumpet and they would give a concert that night along with BSU's top jazz band. We'd be getting tickets for that as well. Then we'd stay overnight because it gets pretty late that night and we'd come back the next morning on that Sunday and return all fine tuned in, ready to go for contest on. So the trip is pretty straightforward. The kids play, minimal fees paid for the cover, like house, the hotel. We take a school bus up there. We also provide room for the, for the bus driver as well, so he's taking care of her, she's taking care of. Actually, I think they kind of fight over that trip because they really like it. They like that trip. So it's a good experience.
Mr. Furtick, the $70 trip, $70 cost per student covers the, all of the cost of the trip?
That covers the cost, yeah, for them it does. Aside from food, so there'd be a couple of meals to pay for, but other than that, that's the fee for students.
And obviously a Saturday and Sunday, so a weekend, so we don't have to worry about any school time.
No, school time off, that's right.
Typically, there's a form that is filled out inside, just a stock form that's filled out and signed prior with inclusion in the packet?
We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
It hasn't made its way to our office, we'll scan it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm working under the assumption that it's been like thumbs up by the people that need to make that approval?
Correct. There's a nod from the building leader.
There's a nod from the principal. And then is there, on that form, it also will say like if there's a cost to the district? So is there any cost to the district for this trip?
No, aside from this, the bus driver, that's the only thing.
The bus driver.
Through activities.
Through activities account? Okay. So 21 account then.
Yeah, yeah, it's approved through, through damn.
Yep. Excellent. Perfect. All right, so pending the, just making sure that the form comes in and gets signed and documented the proper way. Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's a great trip. So I've heard. So there was an opportunity for this item for consideration. I'd appreciate a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. And any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those signify by aye?
Aye.
Post? And motion approved. Thank you so much, Mr. Furtick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fun.
Before you leave, I got to say, great concert last week.
Oh, thank you.
Wonderful job. Great job.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's a really fun one.
It was. Great job. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on, item 6C, superintendent's report, Dr. Riddick.
Oh, boy. All right. What a fantastic month it's been for Rockford area schools. Due to the calendar alignment, it's been five weeks since we've gotten together for a board meeting. And I want to extend my gratitude to the city of Greenfield for hosting us in October. And we're gearing up to hit the road again in February as we're going to be going to the city of Corcoran. The community outreach has been intentional as we aim to build and strengthen connections with residents across every corner of this remarkable school district. So now as we find ourselves moving into late November, it's been an absolutely incredible autumn. Tonight, we had the pleasure of listening to Mr. Menard, our high school principal. While he is truly fabulous, I was particularly thrilled to hear directly from our high school students about their experiences in fall activities. By all accounts, it was a highly successful fall season and I want to extend my appreciation to the students and the staff. So with Rockford High School here this evening, I do have the great pleasure of sharing a few other happenings at our other schools, both Reams and the Middle School. Before I do though, a couple of small tidbits here of information with respect to our football program. I just found this out, I think yesterday, but if you didn't know, that the Minnesota State Coaches Association named their Academic All-Star Silver Award and Rockford High School's football program was a recipient of that for the 13th time in the last 14 years. So not only do we have some really talented football players, they're smart too. And so that was pretty cool. By the way, Rockford was a spotlight game on CARE 11 a couple of weeks ago and we did have a member of our team achieve Randy Shaver's All-Metro team just last Friday. So really pretty cool. Switching gears to our elementary school at Reams, a few things that Principal Nias wanted me to share. The Reams staff and students took the Reams 20-year aerial photo at their activity celebration. That was quite fun. All third and fourth grade students recently participated in the district coral festival. Teachers completed their first round of fall conferences. Reams hosted their annual Veterans Day celebration program. Fourth grade students are currently working on their holiday light show. This will be the mid-year celebration of the 20th anniversary. It'll be recorded and shared on social media for all of you to view. Students in grades K4 had the opportunity to go to the high school and see, it was the first act, I believe, of Bye Bye Birdie last Friday. And the Reams staff members continue to work hard with the new REDAC implementation using the Orton-Gillingham approach. The staff also continues to work on arts integration lessons and updating their arts mapping process. And finally, at Reams, third grader will begin their artist and residence experience with Ms. Carla this week. Moving on over to our middle school. Again, they had a veterans program that was very successful, included two student speakers who read their essays of their choice on the topic regarding veterans bravery or reflecting on what it means to honor veterans. The event also included a video from Medal of Honor winner Florence Grobert, who talked to students about service. Our student council at the middle school has been advocating for student needs and leading as a team. They recently met with Chef Harlan and Manny, discussed things related to the lunch experience, providing their feedback there. The middle school students also made requests, but they also intentionally looked, yeah, you should have heard the feedback, looked for ways they could help. The cooks let our student council know that the gum in the lunchroom was unsanitary and our leaders made a short PSA video to notify students. Starting the second week of the quarter, almost all boost classes will receive their Tier One literacy lessons. Only two weeks left, but we've heard a lot of positives about that initiative. We've also been meeting to confirm the safety protocols and lesson planning of the new rock wall. Okay, this is coming. The installation date is now tentatively scheduled for December the 19th with training to follow. We might make another road trip upstairs as a board one of these days. That could be quite fun, but we're excited about that installation coming. On November 6th, the teachers had a morning P E time where they had numerous teacher leaders take an active role in leading the aspects of their school improvement plan. Pleased to welcome back Veronica Furtick and Thora Binsfield from FFA Nationals. And you, some of you who were here in the building on Thursday heard all that ruckus upstairs. So we had the Youth Frontiers 7th grade courage retreat here and wow, was it a success. I heard from a lot of the staff about how great it was and I walked up there and sat in for myself for a little while and I was just blown away. So, you know, kids say a lot of things at that event that they wouldn't say in other places with respect to caring about others and taking care of others. And I know that the staff was very proud of the students for their participation. Other news that's definitely worth sharing and all of you are part of it, but the outstanding work that this board has done on revisiting and reimagining our strategic planning process. We did feel comfortable with our mission and vision statements, but the board has worked hard on the five strategic directions that will guide our work for years to come. Again, I mentioned in our work session, I'm going to be sharing some of those things with our staff in the next week or so. And I know they're going to be excited to see that as well and the connections to the alignment and our schedule. Again, some of the work session items, our calendar committee met, directed school calendars for both school year '24, '25 and '25, '26. Those were approved earlier this evening. Along with those committee meetings, this board has engaged in several other meetings, but I'm going to digress to allow you all to share that later in the meeting. As the proud superintendent, there's a lot here, right? This is five weeks of stuff. As a proud superintendent of Rockford area schools, I got the pleasure to represent the district at two wonderful recognition events. First being the Leadership and Educational Excellence banquet, which recognized excellence in classroom instruction. The second, which was just last week, was an event that demonstrates gratitude for the hardworking educational support staff we have here. Both events were held on separate evenings in St. Cloud, where our very worthy recipients received acknowledgement for their great work with students, families, and their colleagues. I also was able to attend the FFA National send-off. Great work, by the way, that was fun. And the outstanding Rockford High School community tour that was mentioned, the band concert that we shared about, the career fair, holy cow, was that cool to walk through that and see what was going on with careers around our community, as well as visiting many classrooms in our three schools. Other endeavors, I was included with a meeting with Minnesota Speaker, the House Minister Hortman, here a couple of weeks ago, and Hennepin County Sheriff, DeWanna Witt, where we discussed some potential statewide solutions to the school resource officer statutes. It's highly likely I'm going to be asked to go on and testify probably in February with respect to SROs. I also attended the Northwest Suburban Integration School, there's a superintendent advisory committee meeting, First Annual Minnesota Superintendent Institute, Masico Executive Advisory Committee Meeting, MAS A Federal Policy Advocacy Meeting, AMSD Superintendent Roundtable, the C Executive Committee Meeting, and the AMSD Fall Conference. Other pertinent and timely information includes the finalization and submission of our World's Best Workforce Plan and Achieving Integration Report that went in here a couple of weeks ago. I'll be sharing some of that information here this evening. While I speak on that, I would like to express some special gratitude to the members of our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. That group met early last week to review the World's Best Workforce Process and offered their feedbacks. If you were there. Within our district, we've also undergone some important internal reorganization. So within the areas of operations and finance, happy to share that we have contracted with Bridget Peterson of Ed Fin MN to consult with us on all matters related to finance. Bridget's going to be our consultant in a CFO capacity, working around eight hours a week or as needed. This is gonna allow Mr. Mike McNulty to oversee other aspects of our district operations, such as HR, transportation facilities, and vendor contracts. In the area of instruction, uh, we've changed the title of that department from the Department of Teaching and Learning to the Department of Learning and Innovation. Having not replaced our director, yours truly has assumed oversight of that department, um, and I'll be doing that for the foreseeable future, and maybe longer. I want to also add, however, that Rockford High School teacher Kathy Mattson was interviewed and was hired as a part-time TOSA, um, that wasn't a good enough title, so she is now our Learning and Innovation Specialist for our system. She's gonna retain her teaching duties, she's requested to do that because she doesn't wanna leave kids. She's gonna spend about 10 to 12 hours per week assisting me with the leadership of that department. These moves will all set us up for success in both, uh, the near and long-term future. And in closing, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the amazing Rockford Education Foundation Event that took place this past Friday evening. I want to thank the foundation leadership, uh, the donors, and all attendants for this wonderful evening, including one of our fabulous emcees who's sitting over there in the corner. I shared this with some of you earlier, but people told me that was a cool night. You couldn't describe it. It was something else, and I've never been a part of anything like that before, and I was honored, uh, to be there, so, um, great job to that team, that committee, and they did a lot of great fundraising, uh, for our students in our, in our school district, so that concludes the superintendent.
Any questions for Dr. Rado?
Good enough, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 lots happening. Lots of things going on.
Lot of great things happening.
I, I, again, I'm just gonna say, I love this addition to our agendas, I love it.
Yep, take a drink.
I'm gonna switch seats here now, I think, or we might stay here, wherever you'd like, does it matter?
Wherever you feel comfortable. So we can move on to our 60 World's Best Workforce.
All right, well, let's hit. So, um, as you know, that, um, prior to my arrival, on this was, um, work that Mr. Rob Danicker did, and he did a fine job of taking care of our World's Best Workforce for a couple of years, um, I do it a little bit differently, and we're gonna see a few changes even more so as we go into next year. The Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee that I mentioned did meet, uh, last week on the 14th, and, um, we went through this particular presentation, or one very similar to this, so I'm gonna share it with the board tonight, and if you have any questions as we proceed, please feel free to ask. Again, the World's Best Workforce is a byproduct of Minnesota Statute 120B.11, and within that statute, the role of the committee was and is to review and advise a district, uh, World's Best Workforce on the strategic plan for submission to this school board. That statute has five very specific goals. Number one, all children are ready for school. Number two, all third graders can read at grade level, which, by the way, this one will be changing, uh, in the upcoming years, um, it's not, it's no longer gonna be just specific to third graders, but all students can read at grade level. Uh, the third one, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. Four, all students are ready for college and career, and five, all students graduating from high school. With the reporting requirements, uh, apologize if some of this didn't come through quite well on the, um, uh, the transfer from the, the presentation to the screen here, um, we're talking about district and school goals, how we assess and evaluate student progress, conversations around gifted and talented, uh, curriculum review process, teacher and principal evaluation, professional development, the leadership teams we have in our school system, access to excellent and diverse teachers, the annual budget, and periodic reporting. So these are all things that, um, are requirements of the World's Best Workforce Report. We're gonna be talking a little bit about each of our three schools, Reams, our arts magnet, our Rockford Middle School, our STEM magnet, and as we heard earlier from Mr. Merritt, our Rockford High School, IB World School, our IB magnet program. Why do we do this? We do this to measure the effectiveness of our curriculum and meeting the Minnesota academic standards, and also to inform curriculum instruction decisions based on student achievement results. How are we using it? Through instructional planning, intervention, progress monitoring, placement, state and federal requirements, and internal and external accountability. Gifted and talented programming, um, I had a conversation with Ms. Holly Bjorn, and we talked a lot about what's going on there, uh, within the program that she leads, and one of the things she mentioned to me is it wasn't, she hasn't really been asked about this in quite some time, and so she was happy that, um, we had a conversation. You will notice, if you happen to have time on your hands and improve our website, that we have added some things around our gifted and talented programming, because it's pretty great, and I don't think people know enough about it. Um, we have advanced differentiation going on with pull-out, push-out, and special programming, and, um, also some advanced coursework that's being offered, and we've heard some of that from Mr. Menard today. It didn't copy very well to the screen, but I want to talk a little about policies 513 and 550R, which surround student promotion, retention, program design, acceleration, early interest in kindergarten. These are all aspects that are supposed to be connected to the World's Best Workforce. I honestly wasn't sure if they were before, because I couldn't find the report online from last year, but I did find the one pager with the goals. You will now find our World's Best Workforce Report online, um, and it's there from, see, I'll, I'll allude to that towards the end of this presentation. Another part of the curriculum review step process is to ensure a guaranteed viable curriculum that's aligned to state standards implemented with best practice, and also had fidelity. You heard, uh, Mr. Menard talk about Common Language, we're gonna be talking about that much more in the next year and a half in our system to make sure that we're doing things, um, in the same way in the, in, in all of our schools, so that's easy for our students to follow, um, and are connected and aligned to the, uh, best practices and the standards within our state. The evaluation systems are really big focused on goals and growth for both teachers and administrators, and my apologies, this didn't transfer over so well.
It looks beautiful on Boardbook, by the way.
Does it?
Yes, it's perfect on Boardbook.
I'm glad.
Don't worry about it.
I'm glad, because I don't know what happened here. The content's gonna be excellent, though.
Yes.
Our teacher evaluation model, I have to say this, this is a real strong suit of Rockford area schools, and one of the things that really stood apart when, um, when Kathy interviewed for, um, the Specialist of Learning and Innovation, um, she's had her hands in a lot of these things around our, our teacher support system with observations, our Q-COM process, um, individual growth and development plans, the peer review, looking at student growth and engagement, and the portfolio. So it's really been, um, a team effort from the standpoint of our, of our faculty, um, they support one another, and it's really well-connected. We are gonna be spending some time working on this to, um, you heard, uh, Mr. Menard also allude to the fact that many site teams might claim to be working on instruction, but almost always, human nature drags you into the operations, and so he's already started that separation plan. We're gonna be working on this plan again as we roll up things in the spring, where we're gonna have a building instructional leadership team and a building operational leadership team, built in bolt, if you will, um, that'll be focused on very specific things within their buildings, and that built, in particular, be focused, laser-focused on instruction, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, our new teacher induction and mentoring program is quite strong, as are our professional learning communities within this system. When I arrived, I wasn't quite sure what was the, the plan with respect to our principal evaluation process, so I constructed one, and we now have a system that, um, I think is working very well for all three of our principals and myself, um, as their direct supervisor. Uh, we did goal-setting when school started, and that's where I asked the principals to really narrow their focus and their goals, and I will say this, for some, it was easier than others, um, but they did a great job, and they said at the end of the day that they were really happy to do that. Talking about strategic leadership, instructional leadership, managerial, cultural, communications, the school-community partnership piece, and also leading with ethics and professionalism. I say this all the time, and this cannot be overstated, culture and climate matter, and so the principals in the buildings, um, have a direct correlation on how the teachers feel and perform. Um, I know that, um, Board Chair Gordy was on a call, I, I, I got a text from him while I was at AMSD, listening to the, um, most recent, uh, research around prin, the principalship. And I, I was actually talking quite extensively, so I think he heard me, and so he was, he was texting me during the meeting. Um, the effect of the principal on student academic achievement, um, is, is much, much higher than most people would, would come to expect, it is right behind teachers, um, and most people don't necessarily know that. I feel really good about the principals that we have in this system, um, they're doing wonderful work with our, our students and our staff, um, and we did meet to put our goals together. We'll be meeting again, um, mid-year, somewhere around February, by the way, I meet with them every other week as a team, um, as well, but meeting them, with them individually around these goals three times a year, so we'll be meeting again in February, and again in April or early May, um, to see how those goals went. We're gonna be mirroring the system around instruction with our SIP goals next year, so it'll be very similar, um, to this process as well. Uh, teaching and learning, again, there's the Curriculum Advisory Committee. Our teacher leadership teams that are in place in our system, we have the A Team, which focuses on Q-COM, our PLC Leads, um, our, our curriculum integration, our, trying to remember the, the, um, the acronym for that one. That, that, those are our magnet leads, so it's Jill, Darren, and Jamie, um, I have to remember the acronym there. Uh, the Teacher Induction Program, Mentor-Mentee Program, a workaround instructional technology and MTSS, which is something that is on our goals for the next year, that all leads into professional development. Again, this team we have was comprised of teachers, parents, support staff, uh, we did not have any students show up for that one, but we did have school board reps and community members there last week. And to ensure active participation in this plan, and improving our district instruction and curriculum. One of the things you're gonna hear a little bit more from me as we go along on this is, um, the creation of a survey, um, and we're gonna be doing that, and I know it's been done, I think, hit and miss a little bit within the system, but, um, we're gonna do that, because what we don't wanna do is, the only time we go and have conversations with our communities and we're asking them for money. So it isn't, here comes the tin cup again, but we're gonna talk about instruction, we really want your feedback on, on, um, on how your children are learning, what they're learning, and even the folks who don't have kids in school, we wanna hear from them, that's important as well. Again, the teacher leadership, those are the ones that we've mentioned earlier. It's really strong in this system, it's something that stood out to me as I've come on board as your superintendent. Then the professional development, uh, knowing that it's a continuous improvement process, we're always looking to get better.
It's really pretty in the Boardbook, I want you to know.
Thank you.
It looks super good in the Boardbook.
I'm glad. Look there more often than this, I guess.
Well, they did it when you presented last week.
No, it didn't.
Everything is there, you know, and it's like, refining the quality of custom instruction, enabling individuals to grow professionally.
The big part is, you're gonna get the content.
Yes.
And again, here are the definitions here, this is all within our, um, World's Best Workforce, um, we have to include these things, and I can share a little about this, an ineffective teacher means that they're basically on our improvement plan, we have zero teachers, I'm proud to say, on an improvement plan in our system. We do have some, what they would classify as inexperienced, does not mean they're not high-quality, just inexperienced, and that number's on our report, I think it's 17, I think, that are, um, teaching for three years or fewer, fairly veteran status, how to field teachers, a teacher who is writing instruction in an area where they're not licensed, doesn't mean they don't have a license, they all have a license, uh, but they might be teaching something outside of their license. Of the eight we have, um, eight, or six of them, I believe, are in special education, one is in, um, EL, and the other one is one of our most outstanding teachers in math who's teaching in business, and that he's just teaching that for a fraction, so, um, really pretty happy with where we are from the standpoint of our, of our, our teacher quality and the, uh, the folks we have in our system interacting with kids on a daily basis. Uh, we do need to share this annually, how we spend our staff development dollars, it's a 2% set aside from the state, which equates to a little over $200,000. Um, we spend a fraction on stuff, students where someone might be attending a conference, and we'll spend PD dollars on that, uh, mostly it's right around professional development, whether it's conferences or things of that nature, and curriculum development is also the writing of curriculum, that also accounts for a piece of the pie of our, um, district assessment coordinator, Kevin Neff, is also in that curriculum development piece. Annual reporting is done on our school website, I think it is up there as we speak. Uh, the periodic reporting is the community survey piece, which I will be bringing to you in a work session soon, um, I'll bring in a draft for us to look at, uh, to consider, one that I have been working on in the past and have used, um, and then, um, that is something we generally wanna do about every two years, you don't wanna survey every year, but about every two years to get feedback from the community on how they think we're doing. And we will look and ask questions, and we'll get the good, and maybe not so good, and whatever perceptions that are out there, because that's important, because the perceptions matter. And also the performance, um, measures in that data-informed practice piece that is a huge part of this as well. Um, so the next steps on that, um, we're gonna be reviewing the school year goals, uh, whether we've met them or didn't meet them, it's all in that report, um, and constructing the goals for this year. I did wanna share a little bit here, the goals, I really like how they were have, how they've been constructed here, because they're based on growth. Almost all of them are based on a five-year average, so how are we doing in terms of growth measurements? Some of it's on MCA, some of it's on FAST, but it's on growth, and I am not gonna pull the report up today, I think some of you have probably already seen it, but it, I'll show you the link on here, you can look at it later. Um, of the goals, um, I'll say the first one that I'm really, really proud of, um, is our workaround early literacy in early childhood. Um, I believe that goal, I'm going off of memory, I think 95% of our kids met or exceeded their goals in early childhood literacy, that's a really high number, and that's, that's where we're gonna have, um, the most effect, is when they're young. There were some other areas, I'll just share that we did not meet goals, um, some of them were in particular around our students of color and closing achievement gaps. That being said, um, those numbers can fluctuate wildly, because our numbers are not significant in those areas, um, but we do have work to do, so I don't wanna disregard that, because it is very important, um, but in some of our cells, we don't have enough to even report via MCAs, because you need to have at least 20, um, and we don't have that many in most of our cells per grade level, um, of our students would be defined as, um, BIPO. Again, all of that's, that is online, um, for us to see, and I can, if, if necessary, I can look it up today if you'd like. Um, the goals for school year '23, '24, I inherited the goals that have been in place for a few different years now, and they were already in place to start this year when I took over, so the goals will look similar, and around those, those areas. I do wanna share, one of the goals that, that was up there was, um, around college and career, uh, preparedness at the high school level, again, Mr. Menard is doing great work with his staff around that. The goal was, I think, 30% of our kids would have some sort of, um, either industry certification or college credit, and that number was blown out of the water, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 56, 57% year one. So, um, there are a lot of wonderful things happening within our system, and we can still get better. Next year, you will hear me do a report on these same goals, because again, those are the ones that rolled over, however, um, we are gonna change goals a little bit, keeping the ones we have that we really like, but also adding some goals around math, because all of our goals, from an achievement standpoint, have been around literacy, and also student connectedness, or some might call that SEL goals, um, around students and how they feel in their school setting. Do they have a trusted adult, do they have peers that they connect with, things of that nature that really matter to the overall student experience, and those are gonna be questions we're asking of our students, um, so we're gonna see where the, how they feel around that. And then, again, there's that community, uh, feedback survey that I mentioned as well. This is the cover page of our, um, '23, '24 World's Best Workforce, that link is live, um, on the bottom of that, if you're on there, if you wanna look at any of those goals, they're very specific, um, in there, and this will be something that we must, by statute, have housed on our website, and it is, um, there's a direct link to that, if anyone wants to see it. I have some questions.
Any questions from the board?
Um, I have a question about the changing or adding to those goals, so World's Best Workforce, doesn't that kinda define, like, the all children are ready for school, or, or the achievement gaps between student groups are closed? So will those be, those other questions that you mentioned about the SEL stuff, will those be in addition to these?
They'll be added goals.
Okay.
Yep, I, I feel like we need to be asking our kids about their experience in school, and I also want to be, um, very public about how we're doing in math, and we haven't been, and I can tell you, our numbers could be better, um, just like they could be better in literacy. I'll say that that's common across the country and across Minnesota, um, I feel really good about the work our teachers are doing, and we have incredible momentum in the area of instruction right now, um, I know our numbers are going to go up, um, I think over time they're gonna go up significantly, and I like to brag about it.
So, I wanna, a couple slides back, it talked about data, the la, one of the last bullet points is data, is that student data, or it all, also, like, I'm connecting the dots to when Mr. Menard presented, and he talked about walkthroughs and look-for's. Also, I'm connecting the dots to when Mr. Menard presented and he talked about walkthroughs and look for's. Would that incorporate some of that data too? So it's not just student data, but it's also data on instruction.
I think we can report on that elsewhere, but this World's Best Workforce is really specific around student learning. Yep, yep.
And same with the survey then. So the survey would be the community survey. Would that incorporate the student survey that you mentioned or that would be something?
They'll be different surveys. Right now, our students are actually already doing those things. We're just having them reporting it. So if you've heard of Sabers or My Sabers, you've just worked around that already. I actually think we're going to be going in our own direction of creating our own survey based on what works here in Rockford and what we're looking at versus something that is kind of a off-the-shelf version. That's, you'll notice over time that's more my stuff. So I think it's what we're going to, but I want to work with our staff to figure that out.
And I appreciate you getting in on the website and holding, holding the meeting and everything that you've done so far. So thank you.
And I've actually had some good follow-up conversation with a couple of the committee members as well. So that's been, that's been really productive. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I'm grateful also to get the, the math goals in the future out there too. You know, just really, and also looking at the World's Best Workforce report, you know, awesome to see that the early childhood, right, like meeting and exceeding their goal. And honoring the fact that we are meeting our reading goal for all third graders, reading, you know. So that just further solidifies the importance of the interventions that we're putting in place and all of that effort that's occurred. So just, I, again.
I love that you say that because that is a huge part of our work. We talk about ADSS, we talk about AVD, we talk about MTSS. All of those things and many other acronyms, those things all come to, come to a head of how do we personalize the educational experience? And I want to say another thing, gifted and talented matters too. We meet every student where they're at and we look to rise the tide for everybody. And so when we talk about closing achievement gaps, I just want you to know what I think about that. It isn't this, it's not an accordion, right? It's this. We're accelerating our kids who need to be accelerated and we're still seeing growth on the top. And many districts sometimes forget that part. And that's why when I met with Holly, I was really impressed with the work she's done. And she says, no one's ever asked me this before. So, and she's, I just quietly go about my work. And I'm like, your work's pretty good. I want to tell people about it. So hence, you'll see some things on our website about that and you'll see more.
Well, and I think that's the importance of explaining the difference in why it's MTSS and not RTI. Because MTSS incorporates all of that and a lot of people don't understand that. And I also like what you said about growth. And that's another thing. We want to make sure, some students have to make more than a year's worth of growth. So we're, yes, all students make work because we learn things new, but is our growth substantial enough to help them move? And then of course, we don't want to put a ceiling on those higher levels.
The last thing I'll, I'll share is something that, I mean, we've stumbled upon this because of Mr. Danikoff's departure. We've looked at this model of I've been providing oversight and, and I've done all of this before, so it's not new to me. But what we've really found is we have some massive expertise within our teaching faculty. And so, you know, I mentioned Kathy, but Rachel Yackish and Polly Trandle, I'm around. I mean, they sent me, they're working all weekend on, on our district literacy plan, which by the way, they're going to present to you sometime after the turn of the calendar. It's really cool stuff. I just came from a meeting prior to our, our work session upstairs with our APAC group. By the way, that group has like quadrupled in size. And they're doing some really cool things with respect to our indigenous families and students. And so Jamie's running with that. I've got, I've got Jill Gordy at the high school attending our Northwest Suburban Integration Content Specialist Meetings now. So she's bringing back data. So we have a lot of people doing a lot of cool things within our system. And they're passionate and they're, they're better than I am at those things. And so there's no reason for me to try to do it all because I can't. But tapping into those folks who said, I would like to lead this. Jennifer Sprague, by the way, she rose her hand and said to me, you know, I've taught five different people how to do the ADSS reports over the years. How would I just do it? Because I don't want to teach somebody else's new stuff. So she's doing that work for us. And they're really stepping up in such a positive way. I'm really, really proud of the work of our teachers. They're doing great work.
Thank you for lifting that up.
Any last words on that?
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Very, very good to see. We will move on then to seven A, resolution of acknowledgements of contributions and donations. Dr. Rival Hoover.
Yeah, I gotta pull it up.
Still on the docket.
I'm hot tonight.
Yes.
All right, let's see. I looked at this earlier and we have a lot of folks, again, with generosity towards our, our students and our district. The Hanover Historical Society donating books and then copies of other things to our, our local libraries. We have families donating to our preschool fund with, and this isn't coming out well online, so I apologize, but Frog and Butterfly Life Cycle Fignarines, Mini Hole Punches, Making Friends books, color recognition, sorting and so forth, and even toilet paper, which we do need and appreciate. Ra has made a very generous donation to the general fund and particularly to wrestling. The Rockford Education Foundation has donated as well. Jane Ramstead has donated to the middle school FFA group. Ra, once again, towards girls' basketball activity fund. The local Lucy Line Orchard has, has also donated some kitchen supplies, aprons, oven mitts, measuring cups, chef's hats, et cetera. Chad Haas has donated a few different things for baseball, including banners, L-screens, which by the way, are really important as a baseball dad. And also some, some pants for, for a participant to use as well. The Fur Baby Barn has donated. Heidi's Life Doll Gardens and Growhouse, the Stanchion Bar, and Miller Trucking. I want to thank all of those wonderful donors for thinking about Rockford area schools and donating their resources to our, our wonderful school district.
Excellent, thank you so much. So this is a resolution open for consideration. I'd appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of acknowledgement of contributions and donations.
Do you, Ms. Nealan, add a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hillström. Any further discussion? Seeing none as a resolution, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Jamie Hillström.
Aye.
Beth Baraska.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jamie Abrams.
Aye.
Jenny Nealan.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye. Resolution passes, you now.
Excellent, thank you so much. And thank you to all that are contributing and helping out our school district, not only monetarily, but also items donated. Those are so helpful. Moving on to eight A, policy updates. Final read of the three policies presented to you. You'll, Dr. Rival Hoover and the Policy Committee.
I didn't have any feedback between the last one and this one, so I think we're.
So I was reading these, the, the addition of the cell phone stuff. It has a note at the bottom that's like per MSBA, like it says, you know, the school district can use this as written or find where it is. This language aligns with provisions found in the MSBA model Student Handbook as an alternative to stating the specific cell phone rules. The dis, as the district policy, a school board could choose to direct this. So it just says, like, we could do this or we could do something. I'm wondering if the note is necessary.
It may not be. I think what it's getting at there, just because I dealt with this in another place, is that the school board reserves the right to make the policy more restrictive if you'd like.
Okay.
Excellent, any other further conversations or concerns? So this is the second reading of those three policies. Would appreciate a motion for acceptance.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Two.
Second.
You guys are just going to say two. Yeah, yeah, two, two accept policies, second read of policy five twenty-four, six oh four, and six twenty.
I'll make a motion to accept all the policies.
Thank you so much. And then the second would be, all right. Ms. Nealan, I appreciate that. Any discussion beyond that? Excellent, seeing none. This is just a regular vote, so all those in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Pose. Policies are adopted. Thank you so much. That leads us to the board and superintendent, if needing more updates and announcements.
I've given you plenty of updates and announcements. I'm going to pass.
We will then move into nine A, negotiations committee meeting Tuesday, November twenty-first, six o'clock, RCC Conference Room eleven. Board of Ed work session Monday, December fourth, six thirty, in the district office room, boardroom. Policy committee meeting Monday, December eighteenth, five P.M., district office boardroom. And regular meeting of the Board of Education Monday, December eighteen, six thirty, in the district office boardroom. Those are the upcoming meetings that we have.
Chair Gordy?
Yes.
We're waiting word back from the EMR if they are wanting to cancel tomorrow night. We just haven't heard back yet.
Very good.
Right now, it's on as scheduled unless.
Pending notification.
Pending notification, yeah.
Very good, thank you so much. So people are aware. We will move then on to, I'm going to check with, we're all good with those dates? Yep, very good. Thumb up from, from Jessica. Appreciate that. Yeah, just making sure. Nine B, board committee updates.
I, you'll go, is that what you said? Awesome, Jess, please.
All right. Well, I was at the calendar committee meeting. And then we had our board strategic planning on the twenty-third. The next day I did attend the tour, which I will echo Jamie's sentiment about that. It was amazing and awesome. And I'm glad to hear that there's something in the works to be able to get that out and share that out. And it was awesome and it'd be great if people could just take that tour and, and see how awesome our schools are. I met with Jamie after our last strategic planning session. Jamie and I met again just to refine a few things. And then negotiations. We have had two meetings. I've attended two meetings with EMR. I missed our district one. But I did meet with Melissa Joseph to discuss one portion of the contract to put things together. So we're ready for that and our next negotiations. I think that is it.
Beautiful, any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Oh, in Masico, obviously. I went to Masico at the end of, like, the thirtieth of October.
Excellent. Can we jump across, Ms. Baraska?
Of course. I also attended the negotiation meetings. And I was at the ones with EMR, but not, there was one, I think, internal. I was sleeping because I flew to and from Alaska in one day.
First class.
Yep. And I was at the Curriculum Advisory Systems Accountability Committee. That was very nice. And of course, the strategic planning.
Excellent, thank you so much. Any questions?
All right. Ms. Nealan, are you willing?
Ready.
Thank you.
Willing and able.
Excellent.
So I'm still volunteering with Sabers to school, getting our kiddos across the highway safely a couple of times a week. I went to the C regional meeting at the end of October. Smaller than I thought it would be, but still very informative and just great conversations happening. It wasn't more like instructional, it was conversation. I, we had a strategic planning session. And then the next day was the tour and exactly what everybody else had. It was awesome. Like, and I had never even set foot inside of the elementary school before, so that was really cool to do. And then Finance Committee meeting last Thursday. And then the creme de la creme, the MREA summit up in Brainerd. It was amazing. It was, take the MSBA thing in January, but condense it a little bit and put it on a cool lake and have better food and awesome. It was just really, really cool. I highly recommend that next year we bring people from the schools and our leadership team and a couple more board members up there because it was just amazing. That was for over three days. It started on a Sunday night with an award ceremony and dinner. They awarded four teachers and two programs, like really high MREA, kind of just awesome job. And I'm, I'm sitting there the whole time, I'm like, we do this too. But we need to get our people on there. And then the next day was filled with breakouts. And since my favorite breakout that I went to was called Building Trust for Referendum Communication. And it was given by Jake with Captivate, who we used in our winning season in 2018 for our yes vote. So it was cool. I chatted with him later on at the, like, the mixer, the, the thing too, just about. Like, he still has the videos that he made for us back then and stuff. Anyway, that was my favorite breakout from that. And like I said, just super, super awesome. I was really impressed and really kind of motivated and highly recommended for us to get more people up there next year. And I just said that before that, I wanted to end on a.
End on the excitement?
Right, I got it.
So if we keep ping ponging.
I don't have a question for her, but I would like to nominate her to start getting that put together for next year.
I have a save the date.
Yes, good. So what is it?
It's the same, basically the same weekend. So I have to look through the emails, but we did get a save the date sent out. It'll be in November. It's around the same time for next year. And it'll be up in second weekend, I think it was last weekend. Up at Craig's again, so.
Because I think if, like you said, if we could get a group up there, so that's something to start thinking about.
We get a discount if we bring groups too. We get, I mean, the ticket lowers, more people you get.
Awesome.
But yes, I, I accept your question.
Excellent. So if there's, we keep, Ms. Hillström?
Yep. So I've done some MSBA trainings and webinars that they have, the copy and conversation thing that they do. I always like, they were talking a lot about online communication basically and potentially the misinformation that can happen on Facebook. And so that kind of segued into a conversation about, you know, if you stay off of Facebook or if you should engage it. Driven somewhat by me because I'm, was one of the younger people in the group then. I'm like, this is where people my age are getting their information. So I, I just don't think it's a place you can ignore. But so, and then I did, I finished up my, the four phases of the MSBA learning to lead stuff. So I did that in October.
Someone will be getting into war.
And then we had our strategic planning that we all did. And then the extra one, a little bit with Jess, to finish up some of those definitions. The school tour, which again was great. The world or the curriculum advisory committee meeting, World's Best Workf, World's Best Workforce Report. I went to that. And then also the Finance Committee where we got to meet Bridgette. So that was pretty nice. And then other than that, just some kid stuff, but that has been mentioned here, the concert from the third grade to the high schoolers. I've never been to that. That's, was super cool. And then my son talked to me about the courage retreat that we heard about earlier. He was, I was like, that's what all that noise was upstairs, I was wondering, so. And then I attended the school play too and that was really awesome, so.
Any questions for Jamie? No?
Sounds good. So very similar updates to the rest of this group. So the twenty-third, fun to finish up or get closer to finalizing our strategic plan at the board retreat discussion. Participated in the community tour and I will again underline how cool that was. I know I said it earlier, but just, yeah, even having had to, like, kids go through it just to see, to see it come through that way. Boy, there's a lot to market and there's a, there are so many hidden treasures in our district that we, we know about, but we don't like know-know about. Does that make sense? It's just like, and, and the other thing that I kind of left that, it's like, when we're in this community, like, it's just, this is just how it is. Like, this is, we just expect this. Like, these are just awesome programs and it's just like, like, all of our kids get to do all the things that they want to do and it's all aligned and like, they have these great opportunities. And I just, I left that thinking with my heart truly full of gratitude for what we have here for all students. And that was the other thing that I heard a lot on the community tour is meeting the needs of all. of all students in multiple different ways, so many different learning styles, so many different learning opportunities. Going into the CNA Lab and just seeing that, like, in person, was pretty cool, too, in the high school, and just continuing to foster those opportunities for students to have certifications and different things where they can actually work, like, during high school and/or after. Just, again, yeah, wow, so I'm super jazzed to, I'm waiting for the turn of the calendar year to see how you're going to bottle that, because I feel like every parent, you know, even should know that when they enroll their kid in Rockford, because it's like, boy, by the end of twelve years, this is, this is what you should expect, you know? So, I mean, cool, I'll stop talking about that, but it's just really cool. And then we are active in negotiations, both with internal meetings within the district, and then as well as meeting with EMR. Just continue to underline my gratitude for just how productive our conversations are with, with EMR or, you know, and Rockford, just in some of those, our discussions, so love that, actually, and we are aligned in so many things. Board prep for these meetings with Eric and Dr. Riedelhuber, and then just kid stuff, finishing up the fall football season and banquets and things like that, and just loving, loving the fall.
Thank you so much. Turn it over to you. Any questions? All right, so board work, bird work. Yep, so as, as Dr. Riedelhuber alluded, the AMSD Building Leadership for your building leaders was a very nice meeting. I don't remember when it was, but I'm listening in and watching the slides, and I was like, "I know that voice," and so I texted and said, "I know this is one of your passions, and I appreciate it greatly." So that was nice. Obviously, the tour of school, strategic plan, board prep, Finance Committee, Board Chair chats with MSBA. Also, I'll say Sue Anderson is retiring from Northwest Suburban. She had her last board meeting this last month with Northwest Suburban after many, many years, so she's, she's really one of the rocks there, and a conversation about, with her, about the new executive director. She's very excited for the group with Heather to go forward and move forward. She said, "Different leadership, but different is good." So Sue, Sue will be missed quite a bit. I will share, looking at our numbers with Northwest Suburban, Mr. Menard alluded to it, hundred and nine students at the high school, outstanding, right? Students that wouldn't come in to our district. Middle school's at about a hundred and five, and the elementary's at eighty-three. So that's where we are right now with some of our numbers with Northwest Suburban, which is a great partnership and opportunity for us to continue to grow.
Eric, one question on that. We used to have around, wasn't it like two hundred and some odd kids without the high school?
Total?
Total. So what number do you have now with the high school?
So about, close to three hundred.
It's eighteen percent of our enrollment.
Cool.
So without those partnerships, our district would look quite a bit different, and Mr. Menard said that those hundred students is a grade level, almost, a hundred and nine students is a grade level, that wouldn't necessarily be in our district.
And that, does anyone recall offhand, like, since we built up the ID, how much, how many more is that, because...
Well, we had zero before that, because we didn't have any maintenance staff.
Well, I know, but I think some of the kids stayed, but not all of them.
I would say there's probably some from Buffalo, possibly Osseo, whatever, that fit within our busing box.
Yes.
That we did bus heal openly, but they open enrolled, and now they're just under Northwest Suburban.
So I think, but the number has gone up a lot.
Oh, greatly.
Yeah.
Yes, that's...
And that's what we've, that's been the work since the last, how many years? So that's nice to hear, thank you.
It is good.
We are simply winners in that game.
Absolutely.
I saw all the numbers last week myself.
Yes.
Yes, because we're doing good things.
Absolutely, great programs. Had the honor to emcee the Ed Foundation event. Great, great event at Rush Creek, so I really appreciate the Ed Foundation and all the work that they did. The work they did was amazing.
Can I ask a request? I didn't even have that date on my calendar. It's really, and we're all busy, so if they, if they could share that date, like, I literally didn't even know when it was.
So one of the biggest issues that they had is they don't have the ability to get addresses from the school district anymore, based on recent legislations about not being able to share those things with third-party groups, which the Ed Foundation is. So it's Facebook and word of mouth.
Or could they just put it, like, tell Dr. Riedelhuber, and he let us know, like, literally?
I'll let you know next year.
Yeah, yeah. Because I get a thing in the mail.
Well, before next year, like, as soon as you know.
Like, in November.
Because I knew, like, the day it happened.
It'll be the, or Friday of November, put it on your calendar.
But I'll make sure to let you know next year.
Because that is, you know, sure.
Get your costume.
And they always post it on Facebook when the tickets are open. And then, yeah, if you've been there before, you get an invitation in the mail, or if you, like, engaged with the Ed Foundation in the past, they...
Because I have done before, but I don't get any information.
Then you get on their mailing list, but yeah.
And I will say, it was great to see Dr. Riedelhuber was able to make it. I know he had family obligation. The three administrators were there as well, as well as two of the magnet coordinators were in attendance as well, so that's great, and other staff members. Ben Pennington was the other person, that was mine.
Sounds like it was a fun night.
So that's mine. All right?
What's that?
Excellent, so with that then, the last item is adjournment. I would appreciate someone.
I'll tell you to make a motion again.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, second?
Second.
Anyone want to talk about that, Ms. Frasca?
No.
No?
No.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned.